So we have our, some, some members of, come on over guys. Um, some representative members of our Vex Robotics team here tonight to lead us in the pledge. So I'll let them go through and just say their name and grade.
Uh, Gavin, grade seven.
Joseph, grade eight.
Sebastian, grade six.
Olivia, grade eight.
Henry, grade eight.
Hunter, grade eight.
Alright, and these guys are gonna lead us in the pledge. You're gonna learn a little more about them later on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Uh, since this is our first meeting, uh, since the March election, uh, the first order of business is board reorganization. Uh, I will be, uh, asking for nomination for board chair.
Nominate Steph.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations Steph, you're it. Turn it over to you now.
You're not gonna go there and do it all?
You get to do it.
I can do it all in one motion.
Vice Chair?
I have a talent for doing stuff.
Yes. Do we have a recommendation for Vice Chair? Last year was Mark. Does Mark want it?
I'm nominating Mark.
I nominate, uh, well nominate Canada.
I just made a motion.
What are we doing?
I need to ask for a second. I nominated Mark.
Is there a second on Dana's motion from Mark?
Does Mark want it?
It don't matter.
I'll second Mark.
Okay. All those in favor of Mark?
Aye.
I'll look.
Uh, do we have any recommendations? Last year was Dana.
I nominate myself.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Budget Committee, anybody interested?
I nominate Steph.
You don't have to take questions?
Yeah, these are nominating positions.
Okay, so do we vote on it?
No.
Whoever wants to do it.
So, I mean, I will do it, but I just have to say, you like money and budget, right? Sure. I'm gonna need some help.
Okay.
Anybody, yeah, um, like there are some meetings I just, you go, you sit, you take questions, you leave. It's not a big deal, but with budget season is busy, it's gonna be, I might need some help in between, so alright.
Mark.
So, oh, facilities, yes, I mark all the way. Everybody? Um, we haven't had an NHSBA delegate. Anybody want, I mean, I don't know what they would really...
They go to the once a year meeting, vote on different proposals made by other school boards.
Anybody interested? I mean, we haven't been in a couple years.
It decides what the School Board Association will be advocating for in the upcoming year.
It's just once a year?
Becky, they just meet once, right?
Yes, it's a New Hampshire school, I mean, it's the delegate assembly and you take your board, if your board wants you to speak to something, you go there and present it.
Or you just go?
Or you just go and know what's going on.
And just find out what's going on and vote, get your name.
Yeah.
I can, I can do that.
Alright. Policy, I would love Dana to do it again. Transportation?
About Heather.
No, we can throw her under the bus.
I'm thinking...
Those five o'clock phone calls are...
Do you meet before school? Like, you don't really meet?
No, the, the, the Transportation Subcommittee is, is meant, kind of as the last step in an appeals process. Parents wanna bust up that we can't agree to myself and the bus company.
But that's essentially what that Subcommittee does.
I can do the Transportation if she wants to start off with Wellness.
Yes, okay.
That sounds good.
I'll do Transportation. Heather will do Wellness.
Wellness, still meeting during the day?
Usually either before or after school.
And I always forget to go. Nothing personal.
Uh, long-term planning, I'm assuming that's building, because Mark was at last year.
Yeah, they kinda go together, but, yeah.
Yeah, because you've already started working on that, right, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, negotiations, I don't mind taking that if anybody else wants it.
Did you do that last time?
Christina and I, I did the, um, support staff.
Right.
Oh...
Do you want me to assist since I'll be assisting you with budget?
If you want, yeah, you can hang out and see how it goes, because this one will be a big one, it'll be a teacher's project, so. Um, who wants the Pinkerton Time Committee? Because I can't, I...
Next meeting's April 23rd.
Can it be done remotely?
Yeah, people join, people go remotely.
You know what time, what day of the week that is?
Um, I think it's a Thursday, let me check.
It's the Wednesday.
When, maybe I got my date wrong, but I know, I have it in my calendar. You can go to another one, I'll, let me just check. Let me double check, and I think it's the 22nd or the 23rd.
I don't mind doing it, if I could do it remotely.
Yeah, people...
I mean, Bill's there.
I go, I'm actually in person, yeah, I got the 23rd in my report, so.
Um, building, Pinkerton Building, we don't really need...
No, it's...
There's no need for that right now.
They built the social studies.
Yeah. Uh, Manifest, should I just put, like, how about Dana, Meredith, Mark, and then Heather?
Have we just gotta fit Heather into Christina's rotation?
Yeah.
Can we explain to poor Heather what that is? That we just volunteered her for?
So you just, um, this is, the manifest is what is spent. And some people go down to the SAU and review it to make sure it looks good, and then we vote on it. So you would just basically make the motion to vote on the manifest for, and the amount. But I put you last, so, so it'll be next, February, March, and April. You'll know what it is by then. Yeah.
Are we supposed to read all of that?
Nope, nope.
So Dana and what were the other?
I did Dana, Meredith, Mark, Heather. I just did that, uh, I didn't look at last year's, but... So we good?
I believe so. We're reorganized.
And anybody who'd like to come, learn the ropes in any committee budget or whatnot, feel free. I don't know how they feel about that, Heather, but I've never heard about any, you know, just because your husband's on the board doesn't mean you can't, but childcare maybe, but...
The next is board meeting dates.
Oh yeah, the board meeting dates, uh, the, what is it, the first Thursday of every month?
Yes, the first Thursday, yep.
Um, do we have any, I mean, if we need to change, we go?
We normally, we don't normally meet in July, just for Heather's sake, um, unless something's pressing. We usually have our first meeting...
Around the first day of school.
Yeah, towards the end of August, right?
Yeah, September usually.
Oh, we...
Yeah, don't we skip July, August and kinda do an August, September thing?
Yeah. So it'll be September 4th, as Becky has posted.
Okay, so we're good with that?
Wait, what, what's the first day of school this fall? Is that before or after school starts?
The board meeting's after, when school starts.
Plus 28, plus 28.
Eight twenty-eight. So next we have our Pinkerton Liaison, Rebecca.
So, just some news, um, we had SAT Day, which is the second, and it was yesterday, and so we get a half day and so we can get their SAT. Um, so we had SAT Day, and that was yesterday, and so juniors took their SATs, sophomores took their PSATs, as well as freshmen. Um, then on April 16th, uh, the juniors will have science testing, and, um, for the freshmen and anyone who didn't pass the civics exam, they'll take that as well. So, um, and then there's an Easter egg hunt that's gonna be on the 9th. Uh, it's gonna be from 9:00 to 12:00, it's hosted by the Class 2028 and their freshmen. So this is their first, like, community service event. Um, then there's Safety Night in the Stockbridge, that's on April 23rd, that's gonna be from 6:00 to 7:30. Um, then we have Astrothon, which is gonna be, uh, the 12th through the 13th, and that is a 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM fundraiser, so that's all nights for Boston Children's. Um, spring sports just started, um, prom is gonna be May 17th, that is gonna, the theme is gonna be Lantern Festival, festival, and, um, Honors Society inductions are coming in, uh, underclassmen awards are coming out. Um, we have a Day of Giving, which is May 7th, and progress reports come out Monday, and, uh, they finalized the date for graduation, so it's gonna be Friday, May 13th. And that's it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Alright, thank you. Um, do you wanna move these in front of the approval? I'd like to make a motion that we, um, hear the presentation from our Robotics Team before we move forward.
A second?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do they have a mic?
Yes. You guys can sit right here, and then you guys pull this out and do your thing. Okay, so this is our eighth grade team, and they have a presentation, they qualified for Worlds, so, uh, yes?
Uh, so hi, I'm Hunter, that's Joe, that's Henry, that's Olivia, we're Team 2701F, uh, also called Duckies. And so, yeah, this year we qualified for, uh, Worlds, and we've had just like a lot of fun on the team. We, uh, we're all in eighth grade, it's our third year on the team, and we've all been working really hard for us, uh, for this. We, our season starts in October, then we usually go till March, or we, we went until May this year because the team qualified for Worlds. And, yeah, we've just had a lot of fun doing this. This year's game is called Rapid Reload. The main goal of the game is to shoot into these goals with this yellow ball. So it's two teams working together over a one-minute period to get as many points as possible. So each team starts with a ball, and then they can pass it, which it passes defined by the ball leaving one robot going to another, either on the ground or in the air. And if you pass the ball and then score it, it's worth more points than just scoring the ball. Each of these little switches, if you hit it, then each pass is worth more points. So each more switches you have, the more points you get per pass.
This is our robot, we have an intake and a catapult, and we will soon be adding more of these there so we can score more easily. This brings up the ball in our robot to the catapult, the catapult can shoot into the upper goal, and then the roller will be able to roll it into the bottom goal, then scoring both goals very quickly.
Uh, basically throughout our entire year, we've acquired four awards. One was earned at the states competition, which we qualified for Worlds with. Um, Worlds will be hosted from May 12th to May 14th. There will be over or around 420, uh, teams competing. Uh, more than half of them will be from the US, and there are over 50 countries competing, I think. I think that's basically it.
So, yeah, we're really excited to go to Worlds. Um, we've had a really good time, and we're also fundraising to go to Worlds to try and help pay for it, so our parents and coaches don't have to pay for the whole thing. So, yeah, thank you so much for your time, and is there any questions?
Mr. Sangelo and I are gonna speak in a minute as well.
Um, I went to every competition because my son is on the other team. Did you happen to bring the controller so you could show the committee how your robot works?
Yes, but, uh, so, because, because we're going to Worlds, we're obviously, uh, making it a lot better, so it's not fully functional right now.
Right, but just right now, so they can see how the ball goes in and then comes out?
Should we bring battery?
Uh, battery should be charged.
It is... They are working to double their points, so they have added a whole new launch here, system in the, in the front. So, there's, this is still being worked on, but they will have it done for Worlds.
Usually shoots a little higher, but...
Thanks.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions?
It's amazing, it really is. Did you say 50 countries competing?
Yeah.
That's really impressive, you all should be so proud.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, and Mr. Sangelo and I are gonna have a little...
Right, so I'm Mark and this is Catherine Sangelo, our coaches. Phone?
Microphone.
Even with my voice, okay. Just wanted to give you a little bit of a team overview, this is the eighth year that the Lancer Robotics has been here. Uh, Mrs. Demand should've started it when our son joined it in sixth grade. We've had fun chasing the team and kinda took over as the, uh, coaches, because we wanted to see it keep on going. This year we got 12 students on the, on three different teams, so we have four eighth graders, four seventh graders, and four sixth graders. So I happened to look at your, uh, principal's letter, you've got 80 students, we've got 12 of them in our STEM clubs, so we've got 15% of your school volunteering to do hard stuff. Uh, we've been getting some, uh, help with, uh, some of our returning students from Pinkerton. Josh Tamanis, William and Finn have been coming back and helping us along the way, that's been great. Kinda have a, some, I don't know, not disciples, but followers helping out. Uh, and these guys come together quite a lot, we meet twice a week for one and a half hours, uh, Mondays and Thursdays in the gym to build the robot, practice our strategies, work in the notebooks. Uh, we're really trying to show them the engineering process. So they collect the information, the rules, the requirements, they assess it, they build a system, and then they test it, and go around the loop again. They learn from all the failures, the things that don't work, and they get to do it again. But what really drives the progress for this competition is competi, well, is competition. It's the tournaments. These guys will do anything to win. You know, if I put a cookie on a table and says most points gets a cookie, it's cutthroat out there. Juice box, even more so. A trophy at a tournament, they're all in. So they have attended five different tournaments, plus the states. Uh, Moore School helps out with that community by hosting one of the first tournaments during the year. We got steep, 19 teams come on November 19th to our tournament from both Mass and New Hampshire. Some of the Mass teams are, uh, paid after-school programs, so very intense teams that, uh, from Lexington area. We've been to Vermont, and there they actually had some of the Canadian teams came down and compete with us. So, uh, we're up against some, uh, pretty stiff competition. Durham, Oyster River Middle School, it's got like 80 students, and they send like their top 10 teams to these competitions, and they often win a lot of the awards. But our guys are right in their shoulder to shoulder with it, so even though they start with summer camps in July and compete, practice nearly daily, we start in October, meet twice a week. These guys caught up to them and met them head-on at the states. So, yeah, so this year we had over 70 middle school teams compete, and 40, only 40 qualified for states, and only three of those teams go to Worlds, one of which is right here. Very proud of them, they've done a lot in a short time. One of the things we're looking for is responsibility, um, good sportsmanship, teamwork, they all get a chance to display that here. They have to charge their batteries, they have to take the robot home and bring it to the competition on time. We put on them to do their notebooks, it's their responsibility to take care of the robot and, uh, build as a team together. And so, we're very proud of 2701F, the Duckies, that's why we're here. I'm gonna hand it over to Catherine.
Okay, thanks, Doc. Alright, um, alright, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the fundraising, right? So our fundraising goal is to cover the cost for the four team members and coach. Lodging for the four team members and coach, the $1,800 Worlds registration fee, as well as some items like team shirts and supplies that we need when we go to Worlds. The total for this comes to $10,000, we are here to ask for a portion of that, which I'll get to in a minute. Um, there'll also be out-of-pocket expenses for parents, and the second coach, which, which is my husband, Mark, over there. Um, for the adult airfare, transportation from the airport to the hotel, and meals. We've been actively fundraising, the parents have been great, the kids have been great. Um, we've done Shake a Can, we had a very successful weekend at the recycling center. We will be at the Candia First Stop this Sunday from 9:00 to 2:00, if you wanna stop by. Uh, we asked for sponsorship from local businesses and organizations. Uh, for $500, we'll advertise on the back of our World shirts. Um, Team 2701F did a presentation last night for the Candia Community Women's Club, and then they're also presenting to the PTO on Tuesday. We were fortunate enough this year to get our first ever BAE sponsorship, and they are going to fund our Worlds registration fee for $1,800, which is an enormous help. So, we're here in front of the school board, uh, we're asking to, to support the team with similar funds as you've graciously done in the past. This is to cover the cost of airfare for team, for team members and one coach, as well as the hotel cost for the coach. The amount we're asking for is 3,100, that's what I had put in the letter, that's in the agenda. The actual cost of the five airfares and lodging is 3,250, so it's a little higher by a little bit. Um, last time we were here was for Worlds 2022, costs have gone up. Um, airfare is more, lodging is more. Also, our team has increased from three members to four due to the new game challenge. So you can tell by this, this kid's presentations that they are excited to go. They are an extremely nice group of kids, they get along very well, but besides that, they're smart. They're very well-spoken, they're competitive, and they're driven. We hope you'll support them on their quest to compete at the World Championship. Any questions?
Where are you currently at for funding?
We are at 4,500. For, for sponsors, and the Shake a Can.
Okay, so that would be before if we were to give, or does that include?
No, that does not include this.
Money in hand.
Yeah, that's money that we've received, yeah.
It doesn't include PTO?
No, it doesn't include PTO, right, right.
Oh, yeah, yes. Yeah, we, unless something drastically changes, we, we, yeah, we, so far, we, we're having...
So we have the money in the coffers?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna make some motion that we, uh, fund it for the 3250.
I'm gonna ask for 31.
I don't, but the, but the cost that we always cover, 3250.
Okay, so I need a second to discuss.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second.
I was just talking to Stephanie, I, I think maybe we should just round it up to an even four, and then that'll give them two to...
Maybe both coaches there?
Yeah, both coaches there to go.
Any discussion on that? So we have a motion for 3250, so we can either vote against it and then propose a four, or we can, however you wanna vote. So we're gonna call a vote on the 3250.
Well, you can amend the motion.
Or, and, we can amend it, what do you?
To be, and then we'll have to take a vote on the amendment and then a vote on the motion. Do you wanna make a motion to?
I've seen these kids in action, um, Competition Day, it starts at 7:30 in the morning, they have to be there, where they are all day till 3:00. I'm cranky without a lot of coffee, but they're always even keeled, and they help out other teams if, you know, their robot breaks. I've seen them, you know, move away from their table and help them, and they've worked very hard to, uh, get where they are, so, um, what do I have to do?
Make a motion to amend the amendment?
I, I make a motion to amend the motion and fund $4,000 towards their Worlds trip.
Do we have a second on the amendment?
A second.
Okay, so Dana seconded, now we need to...
Vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And vote on the motion.
Now we vote on the motion. All those in favor of the 4,000? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, thank you very, very much, it's much appreciated, thank you.
Nice job, guys.
They actually have their Zoom, their interview at 7:00 on Zoom for the Worlds, so. Oh, nice.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we have, uh, next is approval of the board minutes from the March 6th meeting.
I just keep moving.
We have a motion to accept the...
I move to approve the meeting minutes from March 6th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have... Oh, yeah. Do we have a motion to accept the...
I'll make a motion to approve the board's non-public minutes of March 6th, 2025.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have our first opportunity for the public, I just left to address the board.
The public has left.
If Mark, Spark will bring it up.
We'll have another opportunity at the end.
Um, then we have our superintendent updates.
The only thing I'd like to add is that I, uh, came over on April 1st, uh, which is Super Bowl's Day, and, uh, that was switch day here, uh, where everybody switched roles, the students came in and they had other teachers, uh, in their classrooms greeting them as they were coming in, and, uh, Becky had a replacement, uh, as did Dorothy, and I get to, I get to walk around with them for a little bit, and I was in the younger grades, um, the looks on the kids' faces were priceless, that they were like, hey, you don't like teacher. Um, but I, I thought it went very well, and it was, I thought it was a great idea.
Alright, uh, any other questions on the updates, the Star Time Committee?
We have that as an agenda item later, but...
Oh, and for kindergarten enrollment, it says 26 families came, oh no, no, for the kindergarten enrollment, it was 26 families.
26 families came and now have 41 registered. Which I was not counting on, I was really counting on having two kindergartens.
Two sections.
Being able to have that teacher elsewhere.
Alright. Reports, any questions on the administrative reports? There aren't any questions, but I did just...
Financial literacy was awesome. So important, I mean, we should probably do that, you know, you would think high school might adopt that. Because how often do they go and DoorDash and whatnot?
Have to love it.
Yeah.
Um, any reports of standing committees, building, you guys, Mark, you met in?
Met a couple of months ago.
January, February?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we hashed out what we needed there. I don't know, did they, did we ever come up with a finalization for the, uh, alarm, for the monitoring?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Not yet.
No.
I think we kicked it to the retreat to talk about it.
Because we want to go with that, that company did get back to Linda.
Yep. And like to go with them, but I told Linda.
Uh, Linda talked about it.
Until we, until we go to the retreat. Right.
Um, oh, old business, we have a Power School update?
Ask Mr. Roma, our, um, Kexar. Dan, you want to just update everybody where we are with that?
Is the board, have they been updated on this?
They're, they're aware that we had the breach.
Okay, so, just to summarize, um.
We did send the letters out.
Yeah.
But it was like every, almost every school in the state.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yeah, um, I don't know if you got the nitty-gritty of what happened, but I can share that. So, basically, Power School contacted us in January to let us know that they had been breached in late December. They had a webinar that kind of explained what happened, and what happened, according to them, was that they had a support technician whose credentials had been compromised, and a threat actor had used those credentials to access the support portal that they have access to. At the time, Power School had made it so any support technician could remotely access into any of the hosted CIS servers by just action of wanting to connect into the Power School server. They had this feature because it was a support feature. If something happened, they could remote in or take care of your server in whatever way was needed. Uh, but this was taken advantage by someone who got in, and then basically ran a script that connected into unknown numbers of Power School servers that connected in. It downloaded a bunch of data, and then it moved on to the next one. So, we were notified across the SAU, each of the SAU schools had been impacted by it. Um, and so, what has happened since then? So, two things, uh, the first is that we've opened a case, um, with Primex, which is our cybersecurity insurance provider. Uh, they've passed it to a law firm, McDonald Hopkins, which is the firm that's kind of managing these cases everywhere. So, it was recommended to us that you open a case, since you have the insurance, and start the process of at least making the claim and jumping into that. Um, so, we're in the process of, we've signed the paperwork and we're dealing with whatever fallout. Um, we also have, we're a member of the New Hampshire Student Data Privacy Consortium, if you recall, that's the group that we, you know, we have them sign, uh, the DPA that says that they won't sell our data, and that they will uphold themselves to the standards of what, how they conduct themselves. And according to the SDPC, they're going after a mass action law, a mass action lawsuit against Power School, uh, because according to the terms of the agreement that they signed, they did not uphold their end because there were breach in such a manner. So, there was a webinar that was put out, that put it out, that, um, it's open to school districts to optionally join this mass action lawsuit or not. Um, it's kind of getting itself going right now, and there's plenty of time to decide what to do. The benefits of doing it would be, um, it's, it's very complicated, I guess, but they're gonna be identifying ten bellwether districts, um, that are gonna be picked in cooperation with the plaintiff and defendant, and they're gonna come up with a basic summary of, these are the, um, the, the things that could be rewarded for all districts that join the lawsuit. So, some perks could be if a district wanted to, um, switch their CIS into another provider.
Information system.
Yeah, um, which is a colossal task, um, and with a lot of, uh, funding required to take care of something like that. The funding may become available if the lawsuit works out as such. There could also be a refund, because the district pays X amount of dollars every year for them to host and provide the services. If it's proved that they did not provide services adequately, there could be a refund over the years that you've been paying for Power School, that you are refunded. Um, so, I don't know when the deadline particularly is for the district to make the decision if they'd like to jump in. Um, to be a bellwether district, you have to, um, volunteer for that, and I don't know which districts are volunteering for that, but basically, it would be, y- your part in it would be filling out some forms and paperwork, and then, you know, letting the dust settle and see where the case goes. So, that's kind of what's going on with it.
I would think it would be cool us to join.
Right.
Just even if it is to get a refund.
And, so, we're so small, I have, I'd be surprised if we were chosen out of the tens of thousands of districts.
Right.
I've talked with Dan about it, I think they're gonna go with some of the big city, urban districts and, you know, then some maybe moderate-sized suburban districts as their, their temple, what do they call them, bellwether?
Yeah.
For the lawsuit, but that doesn't mean we couldn't benefit if they won, you know, the words they use those as their.
Yeah, because even if we weren't chosen as a bellwether, if we don't sign on to the lawsuit, we're not.
Get any benefit.
Clean us, so, yeah, we get.
And if the defense, I think Candia would be pretty, uh, you know, to the defense, they would look at our town and say, this is a small, like, that's a great one to put among the ten. Um, but you would have to volunteer for that, you wouldn't be forced into it. Yeah. Another thing someone asked is, could Power School, if you're in a lawsuit with them, could they optionally terminate your contract? Technically, they could, um, but I think that would be very bad PR.
Be a poor, be a poor business model for them.
Yeah.
Plus, we'd argue it's a breach of contract, it'd be a.
Yeah.
Giant battle.
I would have to assume moving forward with them, we would be safe, because I'm sure they have mitigated issues.
I don't think there's any drawback to joining the lawsuit.
So, do we want to make a decision tonight, then, I mean?
I would like you to, because I don't know when.
Do you need a vote or just consensus?
Give us permission to e- enter into an agreement if we deem it, because what we do is we'd look at it, give it to Gordon, our attorney, let him review it, even though another firm's doing it, just to, just to be safe.
Or Auburn hooks it.
That, you guys are up first, we're gonna be presenting it to all three.
I think, yeah, it's good, I think we should join in the lawsuit.
Say you would have our permission?
Consensus of the board is that we'll do it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Every dollar counts.
And then, these things move slow.
Yeah.
Extremely slow, but I'm assuming when there is an update.
Yeah, we'll have Dan come back and we'll give you, we'll update you as, as, as we get the information.
Next would be Pinkerton start times.
Well, I mean, the results are pretty self-explanatory. I, I, Dan, you'll say. Um, I went to the last question.
Oh, that's what I.
Which of the following options for our school's start times would be support? Uh, keep the existing schedule, it's overwhelming, seventy-two point seven percent, and, uh, that math works. Oh, that's a different.
Check all options that apply, that's why, so people could check both if they wanted to.
Okay, so seventy-one, seventy-two percent were against it, so.
A lot of the comments I noticed said, um, just start the elementary earlier. Um, but I think that when we originally looked at that, and I haven't revisited it since, but I think that the time that Pinkerton would get out of school, our buses would have to be finished with their run of dropping kids off and get themselves over to Pinkerton. So, it would mean our school day would have to end so early that for us to get even a similar amount of time, we'd be starting really early in the morning. Um, I think that that was one of the things that we thought could not happen because of that. I mean, if this obviously comes to fruition, we'll explore all of those things, and our preference would be to go earlier, but I just don't know if it would work with busing.
My preference is, what was it, the start time, seven thirty?
Yes.
They start at seven fifteen right now. It's fifteen minutes, before I thought it was a half hour, and I was like, wait a minute, I think Pinkerton starts at seven fifteen.
It's a half an hour difference.
Maybe they start at seven, I thought it was seven fifteen.
Seven, it's a half hour difference in the swing. It's a thirty-minute difference, because they wanted, they had two proposals originally, one was nine AM.
Yeah, nine, go nine.
And then the other one was, I believe, it's seven thirty.
Nine, and didn't anybody push?
No, the subcommittee, when we met back in, I'm sorry, February, came from the Pinkerton people, well, we'll drop the nine o'clock, can you send the survey out with just a half hour difference? Then that was the consensus of the people there, so that's what.
But I know, like, Dr. Truby's online with doing it.
She's, she, she was present, she was at, she's at all the meetings.
So, so, uh, if you log in, w- w- what is a half an hour gonna really benefit? Like, what, you should ask the doctor, what physical benefits would a child have, it's a half an hour, makes no sense to me. Little ones are up and raring to go and driving their parents nuts early. Older ones, they need a little more sleep. I don't know, just hoping.
So, I'm just gonna report the findings of the survey at the April twenty-third meeting. Um, and as I said in my report, uh, Auburn sent their information out. We haven't talked about it publicly, but it's not in favor of it. Hooks it, and I was shocked by it, Hookset chose not to send it out.
Why?
There, it was, the consensus was, parents already struggle now to get their kids to school and then go to their jobs, some, a number work in Boston and other locations, and they, it said it would just put more stra- the board did, that they talked amongst themselves, and they just said, we're not gonna send it out.
So, and their position is we're not in favor?
That's, that would be my take on it.
Current start time is seven fifteen, stuff I just verified though.
Yeah, so what's the seven forty-five? Some of these comments are priceless.
Do we not have new morning here anymore?
We do.
We do, morning and afternoon.
Okay, I was just reading the comments here and on the moms page, and it didn't sound like.
There's a lot of people that think that there's no morning care.
No, we have new morning.
So, I saw that too, I was like, I don't know, but I'm like.
Looked at that a couple of years ago, we didn't have the number, when did we have a morning program start?
It just started this year.
Oh, okay.
We just got the num- got enough nurses this year.
Yeah, because I feel like I posted on the page that we had a program.
I, I know, but I remember a couple of years ago.
We had people come in. We had, we had different groups come in, I think, we were looking at different groups.
No, but we, because we've always had the after program, but, uh, was it when Bill?
As soon as we changed to the eight-thirty start time, that's when we started looking at, can we offer a morning program, and we didn't have enough families sign up that first year. And then, this is only our second year with the eight-thirty start time, and we were able to get enough families this year that they were able to start, and they had staff to be able to start a program, hopefully, we could maintain it.
What's the enrollment requirement for the morning care?
Oh, gosh, I feel like they wanted twelve students, I think. Um, and they don't have that on a daily basis, so I am a little bit concerned.
I'll just post it again.
But, well, in our, um, kindergarten information night too, I said that we have morning and aftercare, and the, all the flyers I had went.
Because I know, like, one, one woman lost her job.
Yeah, it goes reading some of the surveys too, they, they're tired of changing their jobs, they're losing jobs.
When a bus is late and have to get to work and all that, so, yeah.
I mean, it gets, it gets tricky when school start times change.
It, it is, it is.
Was that twelve students full-time, because not, like, so, one student could go one day a week, right?
I know, well, they, and they didn't specify that they needed, um, to know that they were full-time or not, which is, I think, why we're open still. They just needed to have that many interested to consider opening the program, and then they, they did.
Like, if you could have twelve students going, each going one day a week.
What would you say, Dorothy, like, seven?
Five, six. It's a small group.
And what time do they start in the morning?
Seven AM.
Seven?
Glad those days are over. Hey, guys, okay, um, so we're just gonna, you know, report those seventy-two percent.
I'm just gonna report the, the, the numbers back.
Yeah, okay. Um, we have to set our retreat date. Now, our retreat is when we kind of go over our goals, but the school board sees, uh, their goals, and then we go over, um, fun balance, and then Becky, you do your presentations for, uh, this testing during a school board meeting, not the retreat.
Yeah, but usually we do it a little bit earlier, I almost think it.
I almost think it might be better to do it during the retreat, because then I got the end of year results, usually by the time you do your retreat. I think it would be nice to have the end of year, usually we have the middle of years that are, that are checked in.
Oh, yes, so, we can do, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's up to you guys when you want me to do it.
I, I don't mind doing it at the board meeting, and that way everybody. So, but that would be, when are we gonna discuss the teaching situation in May, or June?
We should definitely do it in May.
In May, okay.
Yeah, I, I contractually have to tell teachers by June first.
Where they're gonna go.
Well, they want to know.
Was really hoping to do it before, but.
Right, so, our meeting's May first, right?
May first, okay, so we can, we do the, that on May first, and then our next meeting, we can do the test results and.
Okay, so do you, May, the, like, teaching situation, and then?
Yeah.
May, uh, June, the testing, yeah.
Right.
We can do that.
So, I'm trying to think, we have done the retreat the past couple of years on a Saturday morning, correct?
Much to everyone's.
Back before COVID, we used to have it at Sunou, and they'd give us lunch, and it was really fun.
It was nice.
But.
Do you want to do that again?
They don't give us lunch, they don't have a culinary program anymore.
You could still do it off-campus.
But, I'm not opposed to a Saturday morning. We did, we did it during the day, on a weekday, but.
They get that student-run UNH restaurant, I forget what it's called.
In Manchester?
No, in Durham.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, UNH?
Yeah, it's student-run.
So, what Saturday would we like to do this?
So, Saturday in May?
The, the later we go, the more accurate we are and confident in what we're looking at for a fun balance.
So, we meet June fifth. School, we graduate here the.
Uh, sixteen.
Sixteenth.
About the seventh, or fourteenth?
Yeah, anybody opposed to June seventh?
Um, yes, um, my whole staff and I are hoping to be at the New Hampshire Excellence in Education Awards that day.
Awesome.
We'll see, but.
You will be. So, how about the fourteenth? Anybody? I'm sure I have like a thousand soccer games, but.
Wait, why can't we do it in May?
In May, because we won't have any more accurate fun balance.
Oh, all right.
Closer we are to the end of the fiscal year, then.
All right.
More comfortable we are with our protection.
What time do we usually do it, six, six o'clock?
Oh, we meet.
Eight or nine.
Oh, you mean in the morning, not that early.
We do like eight or nine.
Like to not chew up a whole Saturday in June.
Well, as I tell all the boards, it's, the, the amount of time is up to the board itself.
So, if we all have our, in our minds, our goals, or what we would like to see worked on, we'll hand out our current goals.
The fun balance piece won't take long.
Fun, not true, because we won't have much fun balance.
There won't be that much to talk about.
Um, so, I'm not opposed to June fourteenth.
Can we do eight?
Eight, I don't mind.
Seven, seven, two.
I'll put six.
I'm up at five, right?
Okay.
We did?
Yep.
On June first, at eight o'clock.
Eight AM, is that the final?
Fourteenth?
So, we're doing the fourteenth?
Eight AM.
Here, right?
And we could change to the seventh if, for some really strange reason, the teachers aren't all away. Um, are our goals in this packet, I forget, I did not see them, but, wait, they, nope. Heather, in our next packet, we'll have our current goals, so you could take a look at them.
Okay.
We can email to her.
Okay, so, next would be the manifest approval, and I think it's on me, because it's April, is it April, it's April. Um, I make a motion that we approve the manifests from March seventh through April third of. Um, I make a motion that we approve the manifests from March seventh through April third of six hundred, six thousand. Nine hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
It's basically what we've spent between last meeting and this meeting. Um, the expenditure report, I didn't have any questions, my only thing is. Can you email me just the expenditure report and the revenue tomorrow morning? So I can forward it to the budget committee. We meet next Wednesday.
What time is that?
It'll probably be a pretty chill meeting, but then again, they haven't reviewed the school, the school have questions, I necessarily won't have answers for them, but.
Budget committee hasn't met yet since the election?
We take it off as a breather. Okay, next would be staff nominations.
I have the board to take the, uh, staff nominations to approve as presented.
I move to approve as presented the superintendent's staff nominations.
All those in favor?
Alright. I have support to approve the, uh. Renewal of admin, uh, contracts as presented.
I'll make a motion, we accept the superintendent's nomination.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. You just approved it.
You gotta prove it before.
Before, we gotta create it. Um, I asked the board to approve the, uh, nominations for track and field.
Move to approve the superintendent's athletic assignment nomination.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we, uh, Becky received a resignation, we have it in, in front of you. I asked the board to accept, uh, Jessica Webster Jones's resignation, uh, effective.
End of school year.
End of the school year.
What grade?
Kindergarten.
Was she new this year, no?
No, last year.
Okay. Um. Anybody wanna make a motion on that one?
I'll. Motion to approve that.
Okay, uh, I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, second reading on policies.
Yeah, so there's no changes on the second policies as usual, so does anybody have any questions on them?
Dana, you do this better than anybody in any of the three districts, I swear to God.
To be efficient.
You could be a coach.
Seeing then, I move that we approve, uh, second read policies, BCA Code of Conduct. CHCA Approval of Handbooks and Directors. CM School District Annual Report. GBJ Personnel Records. IF Instructional Approach. IH Instructional Programs. IKAA Grading System and JLCA Physical Exam Students.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so the first read policies, we have JEB. These are all, we didn't change any of these, um. We just reviewed them because they were, hadn't been reviewed in a while and there's two that we're recommending we eliminate, so. Does anybody have any questions on any of them?
The entrance age.
Which one is it?
Uh, JEB.
Okay.
Did we wanna modify it in any way to say considerations? For. Early entrance accepted thirty days, I don't know, we just, we remember we thought about that.
What, yeah, Nashville did, cause they have this, but then putting that kinda like clause, so.
School board has the right to approve. Written requests. That they, however many.
You wanna write something up for an amendment?
I'm not good at that, but.
Do you wanna send it back, I don't have any objections, so you wanna send it back to the policy, to the policy committee?
Yeah, you have, can we do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I guess, cause I, I wrote Nashville, so I'm just wondering, like, what are you talking about with the thirty days?
So, like, say we have a child who's two days from the entrance age.
Oh, sure, okay.
There's nothing written in policy that says.
I got it, right.
We, the school board has the right to consider proposals, but we have to put a time date on it.
Right, I think so, that's really important, okay.
If they're within fifteen days of the start date or thirty days of the start date, other than that, we're gonna make, take a hard line.
That's, yeah, that's really smart.
So, we will look at Nashville's and then.
So we'll table that.
Sorry, I just remembered.
Alright, so no other questions on any of the others?
No.
Alright, so I move that we table or send back to the policy committee, policy JEB entrance age.
Okay.
The second.
All those in favor?
Alright, I move that we eliminate policies J E C D, Assignment of Kindergarten Pupils to Classes and. J, uh, GBJ Personnel Records.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then lastly, I move that we adopt as first read policies JFA Residency. Um, JFAA Emission of Resident Students and IKA Grading.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I know, Dana.
Letter codes trip me up sometimes.
Um, okay, so we got policies. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Sparkle.
Just till here.
We love it.
Sure. Yes. Congratulations, yay you.
That's the Missouri one?
Show me.
Well, I mean, you're into school two weeks, you, you know. Uh, congratulations. Okay, and we do have reason to go into non-public.
Under letter L.
Ninety-one dash L?
Ninety-one A three, section two L.
Ninety-one A three, section two L?
Yes.
Alright. So, we need a, a roll call.
Second.
Yeah, yes.
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 Cheryl, you may wanna stick around for this one, we're talking buses.
We have.
We should mess with them and switch seats when we come out and I'll tell them when it comes back.
What's wrong with them?
So, we, we good?
Yeah, you want a motion to adjourn or we got anything else?
Well, just future agenda items, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Um, I have one other one, um, besides the, you have the 25, 26 staffing, right?
Yes.
For next year, and new student activities stipend proposal.
New student activities stipend proposal.
Yeah, yeah, for a new activity.
Okay. Tell us now or I'm just curious.
I'm sure, it's, um, you read about the Rube Goldberg group in the, um, my board report. Um, so that's sort of a first step into like doing invention convention as well. Um, so we'd like to have both a Rube Goldberg group and an invention convention group next year. Um, so the teachers that want to do that are kind of writing up a proposal for that. And I would just be looking for a stipend to be able to pay them for that next year.
It looks like they had fun.
Yeah, they did, they did, they learned a lot, like they didn't realize what the competition would be like. Um, so they weren't really quite as, I think, prepared as they thought they were until they got there and saw it. And now they're like, oh, okay, like now they kind of get it and are excited to continue forward. So, and we figured out we had, our team was too big, we should have had fewer kids working per model. Um, so you know, the, the staff running it too figured out a lot of things that they're excited to try to implement for next year. And then we want to do an invention convention that's during the year, um, or during the school day that is when it happens. The kids do all the work outside, but to have it during the school day. But I have their whole proposal that I'll bring to the next meeting.
Great.
Is that like, um, I remember when I was, we had Odyssey, do you remember Odyssey of the Mind?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of similar, but it's more, DI was more like that, the destination imagination. Um, the Rube Goldberg, I guess, is kind of probably the most like that. Invention convention is truly they're just trying to come up with an invention.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and then they're judged, like we would probably welcome some of you to come in and be judges. Um, you know, hooks it's done in the past too. Um, yeah, it's really, it's fun and it gets kids kind of excited about that.
I remember building bridges on a balsa thing to see who could, you were in that too, did you?
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's also an annual event for invention convention that's usually up in Concord.
Yeah.
Yep, and then they have a, like, VEX has Worlds, there's like, uh, regionals and that kind of thing for it too, so.
Was it World, where, do you know where the Worlds are?
Canada.
No, um.
Not going there.
Uh, I can't remember, I looked too, I have it in the proposal, they put it in the proposal, so, yeah, I'll check.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
First meeting, you can end it.
Sorry, meetings are usually not that long.
Yeah, I was telling you, Auburn meetings are four hours.